Have you heard from Mr. Oxley?
Not yet, I just texted him. Okay, he's in.
Good evening.
Hey David, how are you?
Good, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Organization Meeting for January 4th, 2021. As usual, we'll take a moment of silence, and again, during that moment of silence, I'd like to make the following statement. Let us remember all those who have been affected by this horrible virus and their families, and those on the front lines, the doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, all who answer their call to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, the supermarket workers, the food service servers, just to name a few. And also here in our township, our management, our administrative staff, our Public Works Department, together they keep our township running. Let us support our local businesses the best we can, and please don't forget to tip generously to those who are working. Most of all, let us treat people with respect and kindness, and together, as a community, we will be stronger when this is over, if we will bow our heads for a moment of silence. And now we cite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since this is just the organization meeting, Mr. Lewis, I don't think there are any additions or subtractions from the agenda today, correct?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We will go into the organization of the Board of Supervisors. First is a motion for the chairman.
I'd like to make a motion for Phil, Philip Calabro, to be chairman another year.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second, I motion.
I motion second. Any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public, Mr. Lewis? Any faxes coming in? Okay. There are none. So you're not to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, five zero. Next is motion for vice chairman.
I'd like to make that motion to elect Dennis Fisher as vice chairman.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Motion for the Assistant Secretary Assistant Treasurer, and I'd like to nominate John Mack in that position, well, those two positions.
And I will second.
A motion, a second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Since we have a lot of motions that we're going to go through tonight, I'm going to forego, unless, Mr. Lewis, you see anything come across the fax machine, I'm going to forego any questions from the public. They could always ask at our next meeting if they have any, or send anything in while we're also going through the meeting for the second session of public comment. And I think we are at the first session of public comment, and do we have anything that has come across?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman. The public is allowed into this meeting, so if they had pre-registered, they are in attendance. There's not.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess I go into chairman's comments. First, I'd like to thank my board for instilling the confidence and faith in me to be the chairman once again. I promise to be fair, and I don't want to use the word wise because I'm not King Solomon, but I'd like to think that I am fair and also helpful in coming across what's the decisions that may come across our desks. I'd also like to make some brief comments because I don't want to dwell on 2020 because we know what kind of year that was. I'd just like to say that, one, I'm glad 2020 is over. We did accomplish some very good things in 2020, and I'd like to think that 2020 will, 21 will be better. Hopefully, we will get over this pandemic, be back to meeting live again and seeing each other again face to face. If anything, we've learned to be pretty proficient on Zooms and getting comfortable with Zooms, so that is one lesson that we learned, but I'm sure we all rather be in face to face in public, seeing the people in the, in the meeting room, and hopefully that is what will happen come 2021. Let's look for bigger, better things and be positive as to what, what the future entails. I will pass that on to my fellow board members, starting with Mr. Fisher. Do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Just briefly, we all, we are all in this together. This board, I think, putting our, putting our minds together. We all have good, good ideas, so we keep each other in check, but we also complement each other well, so thank you for that. But we're all in this together, is one of those phrases that we heard a lot in 2020, kind of like in an abundance of caution and social distancing and all those phrases that we kind of hope that looking ahead to 2021, we don't have to say as much to each other, especially under the circumstances that we don't, don't need to say, say so often in 2021. But 2020 did bring a lot of challenges to local government. We hope those, a lot of those challenges will be alleviated in 2021. And I was going to say, I was going to mention Zoom too, so that was, that's one of the things that, that changes and one of the challenges that we've already faced going ahead into 2021. Another that, I'm sure there'll be some retrospectives that people do, but keeping it positive and making it personal for me is we did get a year-long sewer project completed in 2020 over in Nob Hill and Devonshire, so that was, that was a major thing. But in terms of lessons, lessons learned, the lessons that have helped me, helped me to be hopeful going into 2021, and a primary lesson I learned is essential workers. And I've learned that there's a lot of essential workers out there, and when I look at, when I look at the township, there's a lot of essential workers in our township. Administration, the parks and rec, the public works, and our police and fire. So, you know, just really, really thanks and a heads up to them that they do really keep township running, and I might add. So we say it a lot, but it is true. We are all in this together. I look forward to serving the township for another year, and just wish everybody a happy, healthy, and common 2021.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mack?
Well, I tend to agree with all that, but I would just say that democracy is still alive at the local level, and much of what we're going to be doing here is to build these committees where residents can participate in decisions that are being made going forward, and I would just urge every citizen who would want to participate in local government, we're opening the doors, and so, you know, hopefully, we'll get a lot more applicants and move forward. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. From the first, I just want to reiterate, Happy New Year, everybody watching and here. Going forth, everything's pretty much been said, but I'll say it anyway. I'm looking forward to a better 2021. I don't think our tribulations are quite behind us yet, but I look forward to coming out of the pandemic and getting back to normal and getting rid of that term that I can't stand, the new normal, can't stand it. I don't want this to be the new normal. I don't want to wear a mask everywhere. I don't want to do Zooms all the time, so like to see us get back to the regular, normal, normal, normal. Congratulations, Phil, on being elected chair again, and let me know if there's anything you need. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Reflecting on 2020 was something that I, I, when I, when I look back on it, I know I made many comments throughout the year of how I felt like I've been on the board for three years, but it'd only been like five months, seven months, 10 months at a time. You know, we did a lot of good work, and I felt honored and privileged that you all thought highly of me to appoint me to the board to fill in for that chair position, so, or that seat, excuse me. So, you know, I love the support that we had for, you know, my passion project to, you know, bring a little bit of awareness about Black Lives Matter and just social injustice in itself, and how folks in, that are next to us, our neighbors, sometimes we feel impressed, so appreciate the support there. I appreciate working with all of you. I appreciate being appointed to be on the Economic Development Committee as a liaison and working through finding ways for new revenue sources for the township. And I just appreciate all of you just being there to listen and give me, you know, very good advice. You know, politics is an interesting, interesting thing, and sometimes we see it on TV as being dysfunctional, but I can feel that we've done a lot and we function pretty well. So I look forward to 2021 being a lot more accomplishments. We continue to encourage our residents to speak out, speak up, but also participate and be able to provide the township with the level of talent that they, they will provide to their day-to-day operations that they provided to the place that they live and work. And I'm just, hey, 2021, let's, let's make it the best we can. It's the year of the ox. I don't know if you all know that, but it is, so I look forward to, you know, springing a little bit of good luck all over the township with all of you. Thank you.
Do you already have the T-shirt?
Absolutely, yeah. I don't yet, but it is, it's on its way. Don't worry, Kyle, it's on its way.
Perfect. You got it. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for all that, all those comments. Before we continue, I'd just like to say that this board did have a executive session on December 28th for discussions of personnel. So let's, let's move on with the, with the organization, I'm sorry. First motion is a motion recognizing Michael Lewis employment agreement as township manager.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion that second.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Motion appointing Michael Lewis as Township Treasurer and Secretary.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second that motion. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Motion to appoint Sean Kilkeny Law and Jerry Schenkman Esquire as Township Solicitor.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Looking a second. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm sorry?
I'll say, I'll go now.
Now, okay. The pass is four to one. Motion to appoint Mary Donaldson as Board of Supervisor Recording Secretary.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion that second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Individuals serving with compensation, the zoning hearing board, five-year terms. Motion to affirm the appointments of Mike I. Pucci, Bill Wall, Josephine Valasteris, Paul Cohen, and to appoint Tim Patero to a term 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Imposed, five zero. Reporting to the Township Manager to serve with compensation for 2021, Traffic Engineers. Motion to appoint Remington Vernick Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with the appropriate authority to attend board, commission, and committee meetings.
I'm moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Civil Engineers. Motion to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers, Inc. as Township Civil Engineers, General and Environmental Engineer and Lighting Consultant with the appropriate authority to attend board, commission, and committee meetings. I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Geographic Information Systems, also known as GSI Engineers. Motion to appoint T and M Associates as Township Engineers for GSI Services. I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Hearing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Labor Solicitors. Motion to appoint the law firm of Curtain and Hefner LLP as Township Labor Attorneys.
I will make that motion.
You have a motion to a second?
I will second.
Motion in the second. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Building Inspectors. Motion to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Building Inspectors.
Make that motion.
A motion of a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Pension Actuary. Motion to appoint Mock and Hopp Associates as the Township Actuaries.
I'll make that motion.
A motion of a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Pension advisement advisory. Motion to appoint the firm of the Hab Associates as Township Pension Investment Advisors.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Insurance Brokers or Carriers. Motion to affirm H A. Thompson, the Hartford, Stanford Insurance, Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust, and ADP Services as brokers or carriers of township insurance and employee benefits. Is that such a motion?
That was a long motion.
Yeah, it was.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion is second. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Township Planners. Motion to appoint CKS Engineers as Township Planners.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second that. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Official Depositories. Motion to designate First National Bank of Newtown, D D Bank, Invest of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, and Univest Bank Corporation as Township Depositories.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Do you have any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Earned Income Tax Collector, Local Services Tax Collector, and Tax Hearing Officer. Motion to appoint Keystone Collection Group as EIT, LST, Distribution Tax Collectors, and Tax Hearing Officers, Officer.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Auditor. Motion to appoint the firm of Malley LLP as independent auditor to audit the accounts of Newtown Township for the fiscal year 2020.
Make that motion.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Video Production. Motion to appoint Video Gold for 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is our second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Emergency Management Coordinator. Motion to appoint Glenn Forsythe as the Emergency Management Coordinator. Is that such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I will second that. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Fire Code Official. Motion to appoint Glenn Forsythe as the Fire Code Official.
I'll make that motion.
No second. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Awards and Commissions. Individuals Serving Without Compensation. Nishamonye and Little Nishamonye Creek and Delaware River Plan Advisory Committee. Motion to appoint Michael Lewis as the Township Representative.
I'll make that motion.
A motion of a second?
I'll second that.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. The next one is Vacancy Board Appointed Yearly. This is one, I guess, we didn't have anybody actually apply for, but we're going to extend. Anything that is open, we're going to extend for the next month or so, so people can send in resumes and requests if they want to fill these positions. So right now, we don't have a, a person for the vacancy board, so I'll move on from that.
Can you explain what the vacancy board is about?
Yeah, the vacancy board is basically what I'll call is a tiebreaker in case someone was to resign, resign from the board and making it four people remaining, and there's a two-to-two split continually on who those two people on each side that it may be disagreeing bring up for nomination. Eventually, after votes of two-two ties or lost it, a vacancy board member, a person appointed that would be coming to make a, basically to break the tie for someone to fulfill that vacancy. So that's what the vacancy board.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, four-year term. Motion to reaffirm the appointments of Andrew Jacobs 2021, Alan Fidler 2022, Mary Donaldson 2022, Joel Robb 2022, Peggy Driscoll 2023, Amber Ray 2023, and the following appointments, Kirsten Zolfo 2024, Greg Deutsch 2024, and Warren Dallas 2024. That's such a.
I'll make that motion. I'd be glad to second it.
Do you have a motion on this?
I made the motion.
Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry. Then second, okay. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Yeah.
This is five zero. Park and Recreation Board, three-year term. Motion to reaffirm the appointment of Andy Levine 2021, Kathy Kelly 2021, Patty Conroy 2021, Dennis DRC 2022, Kathleen and Porter 2022, and to appoint Kristi Hardy 2022, Florence Geller 2023, Jan Filos 2023, and Rachel, Rachel Chev, Chevatet. I don't know if, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, Chevatet 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion is a second?
I will second that.
That motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Newtown Joint Historic Commission, four-year terms. Motion to, to affirm the appointment of Greg Deutsch 2022, Anna Marie Kaminski 2023, and William Marr 2024. We do have an opening which would extend for the end of this year, 2021. If anyone is interested, please submit your request for that.
And that's the Newtown Area Joint Historic Commission.
Correct.
I'll make the motion for that.
The motion of a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Newtown Architectural Review Board, the Wise Harb. Motion to affirm the appointment of Mary Donaldson 2021, Mike Crane 2022, Harry Beckert 2022, and to appoint Bill Marr 2024, Remington and Vernick Engineers as Building Inspector, and Peggy Driscoll as Planning Commission Liaison 2021. We also have a, a point, a missing, a missing appointment on here, which would extend to 2021, so anyone interested in Harb, please submit your intent.
2023, right?
2023, yes. We have a motion on this one here.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board?
Aye.
Seeing none to call, yeah, okay. Seeing none to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. The Newtown Joint Sewer Authority, five-year term. Motion to reaffirm the. Motion to reaffirm the appointment of Jerry Shankman, 2022, then the Bobrin, 2023, and to appoint David Oxley, 2025. I will, I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Okay. Let me get back to the agenda. Hold on a second. Thank God I got backup technology.
Environmental Advisory.
Okay, let me hold on. Where am I at here?
I had, I had. Yeah, here we go.
Okay, Environmental Advisory Council, three-year terms. Motion to appoint, reappoint Jane Filos, 2021, Amy Easterly, 2022, Joan Farb, 2022, and to appoint Michael Gray, 2021, Ellen Snyder, 2023, Ellen McCarron, 2023, and we still have an opening there extending to 2023.
I'll make that motion.
A motion is second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. We have a Technology and Communications Committee, and usually they're for one-year term. We haven't had, we have one person who is on that committee and one person only at the moment, but we will accept many invitations of anyone that would like to be on that committee. Mr. Mack, this is one of your, one of your pet babies here. So I don't know if you want to explain what this, what this committee does.
Well, it's technology and communications, and I think people realize that communications are very important and technology does play a role in this. So I, you know, in the past, the Technology Committee has really been, you know, a lot of techies. And, but I want to emphasize that we also are looking for people with experience in communication and social media, for example, and you don't have to be a techie to evaluate some products or solutions for improving technology, use of technology and better communication. So I hope that several people come forward. And I think, I don't know about how people feel, but I think a lot of people are not being able to attend, especially the technology people, attend these live sessions, even though the Technology Committee is only, only meets quarterly now about, is that correct? I believe, not every month, but if we do it by Zoom, you know, a lot of tech people are out of town, working out of town and can't make these meetings. So if we run them by Zoom, it should be pretty easy for people to participate. So I hope we do get some more applications. I think there was at least one or two came in that we're looking at.
I saw one or two emails come through, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, so we're, we'll just continue to take resumes of anyone that's interested and try to fill up that committee as quickly as possible. The Building Code Board of Appeals, three-year terms. Motion to affirm the appointment of Amber Ray, 2021, Michael Hutchinson, 2021, Greg Deutsch, 2021, as alternate, and Bradley Legoski, 2022. I will make that motion.
And I will second it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. Tax Collection Management Committee. Motion to appoint John Mack as Tax Collection Committee Delegate and Micah Lewis as alternate.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, motion is second. That's me. I will make that second. That motion is second. Do I have any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Finance Committee, one-year term. Motion to appoint Dick Weaver, 2021, Stu Kaplan, 2021, Shelley How- Allen, 2021, Vince Alfieri, 2021, Matthew McCullough, 2021, Peg Disinger, 2021, and we still have a possible opening there for two, for the end of the year. So have a motion in regards to Finance Committee.
I will make that motion.
And the second
I will second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. The Veterans Committee, also one-year term. Motion to appoint Alex Treese, 2021, Ed Valente, 2021, Ethel Hibbs, 2021, Anthony Novori, 2021, and we also have three, three openings for that committee also.
I'll make the motion.
A motion is second.
I'll second that.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. The Human Relations Commission, three-year term. Most are from the appointment of Angelic Acevedo, 2021, Ivan Weingard, 2021, Amir Nahim, 2022, Kevin Antonin, 2022, and to appoint Nicole Adams for 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second.
And
I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
It was me saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. The Economic Development Committee, one-year term. Motion to appoint Joe Blackburn, 2021, Karen Miller, 2021, Matt Peter, 2021, Richard Weaver, 2021, William Sheffer, 2021, Mary Donaldson, 2021. And that's, that's a pretty big board right now, but we do still have an opening if anyone is interested in the Economic Development Committee. Actually, three openings. I'm sorry. Three openings. Okay, I will, I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions from the board? No call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five, five zero. Ordinances and Resolutions. Set bond amount for Township Officers. Resolution 2021 dash R dash one to set the bond amounts for Township Officers for 2021. Micah Lewis Treasurer, $3 million. I will make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Resolution adopting Act 153 exemptions. Resolution the 2021 dash R dash two certify, certifying properties that qualify for tax increase exemptions under the P A Act 153. Do I have such a motion? Never second.
I did that.
I'll just, Mr. Lewis, can you just explain what this is? I know it's tax exemption, but just so that people know.
Sure, it's, it's a property is owned by the township. It's also known as the Wiggins Track that is preserved open space. Therefore, it is exempt from the local tax by all, by the county, state, and I'm sorry, the county, the school district and the township.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Resolution reaffirming the administrative conditional use procedure. Resolution 2021 dash R dash three reaffirming resolution 2000, 2007 dash R dash 10, establishing an administrative conditional use procedure.
Make that motion.
I will second that. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Reaffirm Resolution 2011 dash R dash seven, establishing the Township Pension Plan. Motion to reaffirm 2011 dash R dash seven, establishing the Township Pension Plan Investment Policy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. A motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Resolution 2021 dash R dash four, adoption of the fee schedule. Motion to adopt Resolution 2021 dash R dash four, adopting the 2021 fee schedule. Now such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. 2021 Board of Supervisor Meeting Dates. Motion to set the meeting dates for the Board of Supervisors for 2021. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
And motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Procedure, procedure directing the presentation of proclamations. Motion authorizing the chairman after polling the board to have the chairman sign and the manager attest to proclamation, proclamations honoring citizens and others worthy of deeds and activities.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Tax ordinances and resolutions. Motion to continue all 2020 tax ordinance and resolutions enforced pursuant to section four of the Local Tax Enabling Act for 2021.
I will make that motion.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is five zero. IRS reimbursement for 2021. Motion to approve the 2021 IRS mileage reimbursement of 56 cents per mile or business miles driven.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Standing non-statutory committees authorized by the Administrative Code. The Pension Plan Committee, appointed yearly. Motion to appoint Micah Lewis and to affirm the appointments of Joseph Martindale, the C W A firefighter representative, Frank Ambrose, P B A representative, John Elman, C W A non-uniform employee representative for 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Occupational Safety Committee, appointed yearly. Motion to appoint Micah Lewis, Glenn Forsythe, and to appoint P B A appointment of Chris Bush and the C W A appointment of Joseph Martindale and Michael Jones for 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This is five zero. Liaison and coordination assignments, and I'll just run through these. We have the Bucks County Association of Township Officials, John Mack, Bucks County Community College, Phil Calabro, Community Service Organizations, Kyle Davis, Council Rock School Board, John Mack, Council Rock Senior Center, Dennis Fisher, Homeowners Association, Kyle Davis and Dennis Fisher, Historical Architectural Review Board, Dennis Fisher, the Joint Zoning Council, all members of the Board of Supervisors are members of that. The Newtown Ambulance Squad, Kyle Davis, Newtown Borough Council, Phil Calabro, Newtown Fire Association, John Mack and Dennis Fisher, the Newtown Joint Historic Commission, Kyle Davis, the Newtown Municipal Sewer Authority. Technically, all the supervisors can attend, can attend that also. Park and Recreation Board, Kyle Davis and David Oxley, Planning Commission, John Mack, Dennis Fisher, County Tax Board, David Oxley, Environmental Advisory Council, John Mack, Technology Committee, John Mack, Finance Committee, Dennis Fisher, Veterans Committee, Kyle Davis, Economic Development Committee, David Oxley. And although these are liaisons to these committees, I just let, let you know that board members can still attend. We just cannot, you know, for sunshine law reasons, conduct any kind of meetings. We could just sit separate for but now, now we're on Zoom, so it doesn't really matter. But we call can attend any of these meetings in the coming year. That basically concludes the organization, organization meeting and appointments for 2021. I guess now we can go into
Mr. Chairman, before we do go into public comment?
Yes.
I asked just sort of some clarification around the seats that we could not fill. We didn't have enough resumes. They're open. Seats on the, on the committees. Do we want to establish a date certain that, that people know? I know I work well with a deadline, so.
Well, I'll leave that. I mean, I was just going to say, keep it in, keep it an open date because we want to fulfill, fill all these seats up, but you know, i- if you wanted to do a round one, why don't we say the end of, end of January, or let's say the first meeting in February. Let, let people submit resumes and letters of intent. Then we could reassess what openings are still available and maybe continue on from there. But, but I would just tell people to submit, submit their resume or letters of intent for whatever committee, where some people just want to be committed, admitted to any committee. So they just want to serve the township. So they may not have a preference, but we could find a spot for them. Definitely, we definitely have openings that we can do that. Okay?
Okay, good. In the meantime, they can always attend as a, as a member of the public.
And yeah, anyone can attend as a member of public, give input from the, the audience, so to speak. So even though they may not be an official committee member, because maybe they can't commit to the times of the meetings, they could still show up and, you know, give their input at any time.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupt.
No, no, correct. We'll go into our second session of public comment. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board? Raise, raise your hand if you're on here tonight, or if anyone had faxed in anything, Mr. Lewis. Via fax. Okay, seeing none. Okay. I don't, I don't think there are any miscellaneous items where we have any need for an executive session tonight. So what I will entertain is a without objection, a motion of adjournment.
So move.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We're, we're joined for the evening and let's, our first meeting for 2021 will be next Wednesday. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but Mr. Lewis, you have that date?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, okay. So we'll see you then, and thanks, everyone. And again, Happy New Year, and let's make it a positive and very prosperous 2021. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
You guys.
See you, Mary.